The TC Freeze, located in Monizuma, Indiana. We offer over thirty-two soft-serve flavors of creamy delicious ice cream. Ham-breaded pork tenderloins. Famous homemade pony sauce. And don't forget our roasted chicken. Open Tuesday through Sunday, ten thirty to nine thirty. To place an order, call seven six five two four five two eight eight seven. We appreciate your business.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. To the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Lisa, you're up.
Thank you. I just had a few things that I wanted to bring to you before we went too far with it. We are wanting to do Truck Friday at the depot. It doesn't really affect anything as far as operation. And it's not anything we're doing as fundraisers or of any kind. The only charges we would have would be to cover advertising. And I've talked to Brandy about the permits that they would need. So that would be a benefit for you guys to get those permits sold. I just want to make sure there was no issue with us doing that when we saw. The flyer that I sent Brandy is a tentative. We have a meeting this week to finalize everything. So it'd maybe be two Fridays a month, if anything, down to one from there.
Okay.
Okay.
I don't know. You guys have an issue with that?
We don't need to action on it, do we?
I didn't figure, but I just wanted to be clear.
Well, maybe we should. I mean, technically, we're responsible for any liability down there.
And you said something about certificates, too.
We would collect their certificate of liability insurance.
Okay.
They're responsible for it.
Okay, well, okay.
The parking lot?
Yeah.
The net's under their lease.
Yeah, well, yeah. I don't know. I don't have any problem with it.
If you want to make a motion, we can do it.
Well, we probably should, just to make it official. I move to allow the PCI to have their pre-truck Fridays.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Thank you. Second, we've had an increase of walkers with dogs at the depot over the last course of the last year, which is great, because people are actually enjoying the path that we have down there. But we were wondering if there was a way, if the town had an extra or would be willing to purchase and install another bag receptacle, because we're having issues with the waste. So that was something that we were hoping might be remedied.
So we need a, I guess we have one dad together, you know?
We would stop if you wanted to provide us with the bags. We can keep it full.
Say, I don't see a problem with that.
Sounds good. Who's gonna get it? Doug, you gonna get that?
Okay. Can you remember where you guys got yours, or?
No, it's not one of them.
All right, well, there's information on them. We'll get it. Yeah.
Well, yeah, I'd be through the park to park.
I've got a name. I think it's on my bed.
Okay. Awesome, thank you. And then final thing, we're looking at more renovations for the depot into this summer and fall. As you know, last year, we did a paint project, and it went over really well. It looks beautiful. We've had someone come in and clean up the immediate landscape right around the building. We put in new mulch. And we're doing that upkeep. So the next step is visually, when you look at the windows, and then also efficiency-wise inside. We're going to get some numbers together on what it would cost to possibly replace some, if not all, of the windows to make that facility a little more efficient. So I know that's something that needs to go through you guys, because we do lease the building from you. It would be a project at our cost. And again, we may not do all of them. It may be more feasible to do the front side and then work our way through the rest. It just depends on how the pricing comes back. But I didn't want to have that together and then have to postpone it and come back here.
Well.
Well, no, again, that's park board. It's part of the park. Park board kind of has direct authority. You two are on, who's on the park board?
We're meeting this Thursday.
Okay. But yeah, you should talk about it more there.
What time?
Six o'clock.
I'll try and call Thursday.
Yeah, sounds like a good idea.
Okay.
Or we can just bring it to, yeah, I mean.
Do you want me to just email you? Okay, I can do that. Okay. That's all I have, then.
All right, well, thank you.
Thank you so much.
You ready, Chris?
Yep. Clean some the amount of two ninety-four, seven sixty-five, fifty-one for approval, please. Make a motion.
I'll second.
Call in favor.
How was that from past?
Back in the room.
Mm-hmm. Good for you.
I do have billing adjustments for fifty-two, fifty-two, ninety-one. There's a bunch of descriptions and receipts there if you have any interest in reviewing them, but not necessarily.
Leaks and breaks and stuff.
I'll make a motion, second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
Aye.
I do have our lease on our copiers for the office and the police department are coming up for renewal next month. I've got quotes from three different companies. Canon that we're with used to be IBM. They're actually a Gordon Flash company now. They came, the three quotes were one sixty-nine, eighteen, one ninety-two, seventy, and two sixty-eighty for a sixty-month lease. And that's for two black-and-white copiers and one color copier. So one of each of those goes in the office here, one's the police department. I would like to stay with the Canon, which was the lower price of one sixty-nine, eighteen. And they also did give me a price for a new laser printer for checks and billing purposes for thirty-five dollars and thirty cents a month.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Call in favor.
Thank you. Oh, gosh, these are fast. The, it's old business. I just needed to get a document in minutes that you all approved that I've submitted the annual financial report. Just have to have that in minutes, and I've got a copy of it. If you want to take a look at it, too.
Move to approve.
Thank you. This is for later. So that's all I have for buying stuff.
Call, okay, yeah, call in favor.
Aye.
That's it, thanks.
Want to give you a chance to look it over there.
Oh, well. She's jumping the gun over here. Dude, you need, does Dave need to sign this or anything?
No, that's just a copy of it, but I just need it documented in minutes for my own sake. Thank you. That's all I have, then.
Good. Bill?
So our new block forty-fives, the all-day full-time police officers have qualified with those. We've started the nuisance property inspections. One of the properties we had last year that we had lots of problems with has never done anything, has now got a dumpster there on their property, and they're starting to clean it up. It still has a long way to go, but they are starting to clean that up. And we were also awarded the community foundation grant that we asked to apply for. We got that, and we bought our equipment.
How much was that for, Bill?
Uh, just under a thousand dollars.
Thank you, Bill.
I got something else, man. Now, well, yeah, something I talked to Bill about last week, about curbs, going off-road. An example is semi hitting a curb. And apparently, we can't really, you can cite them, but to go through the prosecutor, the prosecutor would have to decide whether I wanted to do anything with it. It kind of gums up the whole legal system in the county. Whereas, if we had an ordinance, we could ticket them and take care of it without going through the prosecutor. Not that I'm going, encourage or recommend going after every time you see a truck at a curb, but some drivers do it consistently with little regard. I don't know if the board would entertain, perhaps, down the road, maybe looking at elements to to have the ability to cite, especially repeat offenders. Of course, how do you know the repeat offenders?
If you stop, we have a record of it.
I'm sorry?
They're ticketed.
Well, they're ticketed, yeah. Yeah, and it's hard to be there when it happens. But I don't know, the more and more curbs we accumulate, and gosh, some trucks, they avoid this curve I see with no problem. And one in particular, if you care less. So it's just irritating. I don't know how the board feels about that idea, but it's interesting that under the current system, it really be a prosecutor. And it's really kind of silly to send such a thing through that way through the system. But if we had an ordinance, we could definitely have decided to do so. Write a ticket. And, you know, I think for all CDLs, it's my understanding, you're not falling to test if you hit a curb while you're driving.
We can have Nick look into it.
Well, I just wanted to bring it up. I thought it was interesting. Perhaps we should explore it more, so we might go down that route.
Couldn't they challenge the ticket and just end up crossing the same place anyway?
Suppose it could. But I think we should have some system as efficient as possible to address that issue if it continues. Like I say, most of them are great, but there are those that care less and oh, we'll see. So, that's all.
So? Let's go let you all know, we did make a hire. We hired Dakota Alexander Friday. He actually started today. A young man that lives here in town, everything. So we're looking forward to getting him trained. He seems pretty excited about the job and got some knowledge of equipment. We're going to work with him over at the pole yard here in the near future, let him run it and before we put him out in the field. But he's been on skid steers and small backhoes, so shouldn't take long, everything. So, but just so that you know, we did make the hire. Friday, I took the guys up to RMC. Some of them have never seen the building in the back, so where we're going to be. So I took them through, and they're going to write some things down, what they'd like to see and how they'd like to set it up and start getting some ideas. So we do take over, we're not starting, just, we know what we have a little bit to do. So we did do that. And then the mixers for the towers have been installed and are operating. So, and then May fourth is our cleanup day. For, it'll be nine to twelve, I believe, Brandy's what we decided on that. And our fuel station down there has been repaired. It was, we ended up just putting a new hydrant in it. And that's the second time in a few months that it had broke on us. It has a new hydrant, everything. Our two, our one-twenty water, and since we started it, we've had entered two hundred and fifty-two meters. And at this rate, we're looking to hopefully have all the meters entered in sometime in late June, first of July. We have until October to get it done, but they're moving right along.
How do you go about doing that?
Right now, we're just going meter to meter right now and open it and seeing what we got. And then any job that Tony and them do, or Boyer on any meters or anything exposed, we get information from them. Right now, all they want is what's going out both directions of our and we're getting ready to send out.
We talk what's going out by type of pipe?
Yeah, what type of pipe and everything. And then Bailey from one-twenty water is supposed to be sending on, if you've got any information from her. Some mailers, we're going to be doing some mailers and then
Send the emails in.
Hopefully, some of the residents that know or have changed theirs will let us know. And that will help us out, too. So, and then, but yeah, that's all we have to do right now is be compliant by October is just what's coming in and out and then.
So you have two hundred and fifty, and you have how many, twelve hundreds, thirteen hundreds?
We have probably around, yeah, twelve to thirteen hundred left. We had fifteen hundred.
Fifteen total.
Yeah, fifteen hundred to start, and this is what they've gotten done here in a pretty short time. And that's not every day. They've got other things going on. So, you know, depending on how bad the meter is, if it's covered up, they've done, I think one day they said they had fifty-two meters. But if you find them covered up, of course, you've got time to uncover them and everything. So they're moving right along on there. And out at the water plant, the new lights are already installed. NRK has been in for the new lights at the water plant with the project. They're done. And our guys have got the meter on South Market Lift Station. Our meter's all installed, wires pulled, just waiting on. They kept me to fit the control panel in, and then they'll be ready out there. So. Then the other thing out, other than purchased, I was wanting to bring up. Dave and I talked a little bit about it the other day, is maybe you start talking about landscaping the parking lot?
Yeah.
When, I mean, people are going to start getting busy. He was kind of wanting to do a Saturday, maybe, a volunteer thing, so.
Well, what, I guess, what's the plan, folks?
Well, that's what we're going to talk about.
Okay.
First of all, I know Kevin, you are adamantly against septic rock up there, but with that downpour we had, I don't know if you've been up there, Maltrian, pretty well up there. So, I mean, we're, you know, looking at.
The septic rock's going to be fine, but don't spend a whole lot of money on testing and planting and stuff like that, because the heat's hard on it. It's going to be tough to get it to grow. So maybe minimize, maybe just smaller beds with this landscaping trail, then your rock, your river rock, what you're going to put down there, smaller trees and stuff like that. You know, save you some money in the long run.
Yes, because it was all over the parking lot, gets over the sidewalk, the way it's, you know, ran. I feel like something we're probably going to battle every.
Oh, you will. But, you know, should we have some kind of plan here? I mean, we have a bench and a trash receptacle down there. Where are we going to install them? Are we going to have concrete pads set them on? Or what are we doing with those? Any other features you want to add besides those? There's a little detail there that we need to work out, but who wants to, who wants to take charge of that?
Is there a flagpole there?
Flagpole?
No, there will be.
Okay.
Oh, where's it going?
It's one that's being purchased. I believe it goes more of the west side of the parking lot, more closest to the foundation. I'll have to look at the map to see the exact location, but.
Well, I agree, we need to get on it. It, um, this question of how to proceed.
Yeah, who's going to pick out the things that go in there?
Right.
And all that, it's just, I know we're going to want to do it. Like I said, people are getting busier and busier, but the weather's getting nicer, so we need to figure out.
You know, plants, if any plants, what kind of plants, and ground cover and.
Brian Porter did the foundation.
Yeah, he's pretty much not doing that anymore.
Well.
Small scale.
Could Kevin and I maybe sit down and discuss some things and come up with a.
Well, it's a good idea.
And then maybe bring it to the next board meeting?
Maybe some ornamental trees?
So we've, I think we talked before, it's like, you know, even though Japanese maples, there's several varieties, are a little more expensive, they're going to stay small for a lot longer. Whereas, you know, you've got to look at whatever plans you've had before. What are those trees going to look like in fifteen years, you know? And they're going to be too big for the parking lot. So, yeah, we can get together.
I'll just get with.
Because there's a lot of stuff you can plant.
Do we have a red?
Put a cost together on it, put a budget together on it, too.
Hire a landscaping company? Or hire a landscaping company and just have it done?
Okay, I mean.
And then spend a time running a parking lot.
Well, yeah, I mean, that's an option.
Part of the grant is landscaping, to be able to hire somebody and to pay for the stuff that goes there.
Well, we can talk and maybe figure out somebody that might.
I know Justin does it, Montgomery does it. I don't know whether he's doing a lot of it now. There's several other companies here around town that do that kind of work, so.
All right, well, Kevin might work on that, try to have something for the next meeting. The other thing is, I can't remember what it is, an oak tree, but Brett, Brett would like to donate a few trees. He thought maybe to the cemetery. There's a lot of open area. There's some type of oak tree, I don't remember exactly what it was. He said flowers, I can't remember now, but I'll find out and everything. But he would like, he would like to donate some trees to three or four, whatever, to the cemetery. I didn't know if there was a certain type of tree you want.
Well, I, you know.
He said it's, whatever it is, is a slow-grilling tree.
Yeah.
It won't get as big as a regular oak, but it'll get pretty good size.
Yeah, that.
I'll email the name of the tree out and maybe.
Yeah, yeah, find out what it is, make sure it's not some invasive species tree.
Yeah, no.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
All right. And then I do have a few purchases here. One is the pipe that I emailed you guys on for, that's for Martin Street. That was, apparently, I didn't look at the estimate right, and we only got sixty feet of the tin, and we need six hundred. So I need five hundred and forty more feet at three thousand two hundred and thirteen dollars to do Martin Street.
I'll make a motion to approve, second.
Call in favor.
And got a few more items here. Cemetery had a meeting today at noon, and they're hanging, and they asked for me to bring this in front of you for approval. One is for the fence on the north side of the cemetery, over by the pizza king and all that. It's a cost of four thousand dollars for A-one construction to install that fence.
It's a cedar split rail.
Yeah.
We started off looking at vinyl stuff, but that was extremely expensive and moldy shoes and whatnot. And a cedar split rail, you have a picture, Kevin?
On my phone, but it's not like a Billy Creek split rail, what you think of like around the old house and stuff like that. It's not where they're all stacking each other. It's basically a regular two, two-board fence, but it's cedar, planks not flat, one by.
But the intention would be.
No painting, no maintenance.
Not just replace it there, but to go in other sections over time in the cemetery and start fixing up some of the fences.
One on the south side's pretty bad, too.
Yeah, we talked about that. There on the north side, that front pole out there, the fence by that power light pole, it's actually, it's actually zip-tied to the light pole. It's been broken off for quite a few years. So, yeah, it's, it needs something done with. I don't know how you folks feel about cedar, but it's pretty durable, easy to maintain, won't be much.
No painting.
No painting.
Did we look at resistance?
Chain link, or was that just?
Well, that's what we've had there for a long time.
So you're not going to go past the.
Yeah, exactly where it's at now, right?
About three hundred and twenty-five feet.
Yeah.
The PBC fence is like nineteen grand.
Oh.
Yeah.
What fence?
PBC.
Oh, dear Lord. Panels. Other questions?
See, this is a green fence. It's wood, it's, yes, we went green, save money.
I made a motion to approve, second.
Call in favor.
And then they also would like to purchase a broadcast spreader for.
So they just sent you that for the money?
Yeah, they come with the ideas, and I got to be the guy. So.
I didn't want you, Brandy, maybe.
Yeah, a spreader for the gator. We need to buy the spreader at two thousand two hundred and ninety-nine, ninety-nine, and then it has to have a bracket come out to the thing at nine hundred ninety-nine, ninety-nine. And of course, that would be at.
I think the total cost about three thousand.
Three thousand two hundred and ninety-nine, ninety-eight for the spreader, tell me by the bracket.
It wasn't, we're doing with that, we're going to spread.
Right now, right now, we pay to have it done, I think, long-term, that rather than have a contractor do our lime or even our overseeding, which the bid I got overseeing the cemetery, where there are graves currently in the new section, God, it's almost nine grand.
I'll make a motion.
We can go along with that.
Yeah, this'll last several years. It's a good way to maintain the grass, and we can do some liming and some overseeding.
Insect weed control, you can go out there.
Where's that from, Doug, for purchasing?
John Deere.
I'll second that.
Call in favor.
One more thing, and I'll be done. Also for the cemetery.
What they did today.
Yeah, Kevin.
You hunt for a key to strike.
Suit her. Getting there, isn't it?
They would like to purchase a set of forks for the John Deere tractor out there. They have a cheaper set that mounts to the bucket. It's not real sturdy.
The U-bolts that attach to the bucket.
Yeah, I'll have to, it's not real safe and sturdy.
I'll make a motion.
You don't want a price?
Yeah.
Okay.
Nope. I'm curious.
Any other options?
Are these, are these quick attachments?
Yes, quick attachment, bucket comes off, it goes right on it, at one thousand four hundred and thirty-nine dollars.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Call in favor.
Aye.
I try.
You've got to get some.
Thank you so much. The cemetery appreciates, so.
I believe that's all I have. I want to go back to your meters real quick. Is there a pre-date, post-date on those, on that? As far as you were saying that you were going to put out mailers for, you know, residents to, you know, if they remembered what was put in there.
Yeah.
Is there a pre- or post-date on that, any of that?
Nineteen seventy-something.
Oh, yeah.
Because you don't have to do the ones.
I mean, like what?
Since then.
Yeah.
Built since after nineteen seventy-something, you don't have to go manually check.
Yeah, or something like that.
Because they won't be led.
Yeah, like the neighborhood or something, we know, or subdivision that was put in, then we know it's not. Yeah.
I've got an email that gives the year.
Yeah, I couldn't remember it exactly.
Well, then you should.
Running?
Fifty-seven. Was one of the sewers put in down Virginia? So. So, yeah, but we got quite a few done already. It's going to be pretty smooth.
Well, I mean, they're, we should get, we'll knock a lot of them out, just.
Yeah. I think they had a lot entered from that. They have several entered. The guys will start tomorrow. There's a lot of them, too, that we can't see. Over the years, it's filled in with dirt.
Okay.
There's a crew starting tomorrow, going to go around, start backing them out, so we can get get them taken care of. We'd just like to get this part of it done as soon as possible.
Okay.
So that's it, unless you have any more questions?
Do you want to give us an update, Brandy, or do you want to skip that?
Just a couple of things real quick. There's not a whole lot of change, but we're still waiting on the Community Crossings grant to be awarded, either at the end of this month, early April. I checked today, there's no releasing on that yet. The, Doug talked about the one-twenty water. We did get approved for that second round of the grant, so we'll have just under another ten thousand dollars coming in for the phase two of that project. We touched kind of on the parking lot. Our grant ended, we were able to raise thirteen thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, which was the match that we needed. So our actual match money coming from patroncy will be twelve thousand four oh two ninety-five, because they do charge a fee in order to run that. The drinking water, okra that we're doing, there's a lot of valves being replaced around town, so we're trying to put out notices, as we're informed on those, as to who will be out. Any of those people without water will be under Boyle Advisory until further notice. So those samples have to be pulled and come back for approval. And then the stormwater, I was notified that equipment may be delivered as early as this week, and they'll start as early as next week on the Beetle Street project and the two homes. Doug notified the property owners of equipment and stuff kind of coming along through there. Of course, we can reach out to the school again, just kind of let them know. I don't know how that'll affect traffic for the school time, but we can touch base with them before they start next week, too. So, that's just a quick rundown.
Okay.
What's going on?
Bruce, you got anything?
I don't have any.
Roy, you got anything?
Only thing I have is just letting you know that the curbs did come last week and reinstalled one of them. And they're full day. When they did pull it, it says, I think it does need a clean, don't put it in the, in the rotation after they do two and four, so.
All right. Well, on to old business. Sparklight, lease renewal.
So I sent that, it was just the old copy of the lease renewal, so there wasn't any changes in that contract. Sparklight would just like to know if you want to continue with that same lease agreement at that same seven hundred dollars a year, or if you want to discuss any type of an increase as their leases are for five years.
Oh, well, yeah, I think we should raise it, request an increase of a thousand dollars.
Increase to a thousand?
Two eight thousand, yeah.
Do you guys want to just vote on that? If you're all, or if you all agree, I'll have to email the lady back, and then she'll reach out to her legal department for a new contract if they agree to that.
Okay.
Someone wanna make a motion?
Sorry.
Yeah, say.
Is there a second?
I'd say.
Okay.
Seven hundred to a thousand dollars.
Everybody a favor?
Uh, the only other thing I wanted to mention was Reach Alert, we're kinda trying to push that as much as we can, we're still getting a lot of phone calls when we turn water off, um, I understand everybody doesn't get the paper, um, nor can we reach out to the paper with having a one-day-a-week paper, um, to get a lot of these in there. And not everybody does social media, so, um, the easiest and quickest way is to sign up for Reach Alert, you can do that at reachalert.com, we've got the phone number listed, we've got the information here in the office, we've posted that as well. Um, make it with Lisa, again, maybe to run another advertisement or something, just kind of promoting that, I'm sorry?
Can we put that on the?
We have put it on there before, um, in the past, and then we went to the auto pay option, we're very, very limited on what we can put on there, we have like two lines, and there aren't even a full sentence of anything. Um, we'll be using that space for the survey that we're gonna be starting, um, for our comp plan, but we could probably put it on there again, but, um, I mean, pretty much everybody's got a phone, receives a text message or a phone call or an email, so. That's the, that's really the easiest way for us to communicate and touch every resident if they could get signed up for that. That's all.
New business, that's cool, Park.
Okay, well, some's new, some old, I, I, yeah. One, one thing's kinda new here, we had recently re, resubmit a, an application to the Indiana Finance Authority, IFA, and a question on number, number eighteen was, when was the last time, most recent, uh, uh, meeting attended for the, uh, what'd they call that thing, Brandon? Uh, this, uh, bottom line, here it is, yeah, question eighteen, what was the day of the last IFA regional planning meeting attended by the utility, and they have them for wastewater and they have them for drinking water? And, uh, apparently they have bi-monthly wastewater meetings, I talked to, uh, Bruce about this last week, and gave him the printout, I finally got back an email from the lady that coordinates these things, and you can get CEUs for this, CEUs for, you know, wastewater per, uh, operators need to have CEUs. So he thought it sounded interesting, uh, so, yeah, he, he's gonna check with his company, EMAC, and, and see if they have any issue with it, but, uh, something we probably should encourage, uh, our contractor, EMAC, to, to attend, so we can say yes on these things, because it's regional, it's being pushed all the time. Hey, yeah, they could be informative, and they're, they're, obviously they gave education uniforms, there must be some value there for attendance. Uh, oh, yeah, the fire hydrant thing, at the training, uh, training grounds, yeah, do we need to do anything on this, or? I mean, it's all basically figured out, it sounded like, as in.
Yeah, I talked to, uh, Kobe Boyer today, informed him of what we were gonna do.
Okay.
And everything, but, so he knew there was gonna be a, have to dig right there and put that tee in.
Okay.
And was gonna, Roy, I talked a little bit today whether or not we get with Boyer and see if they would just throw it in real quick or put something, we can be prepared, try to time it together with him.
Okay, so you, it's all under control?
So, yeah, we've already talked to Kobe about it.
Uh.
I mean, we have the material.
We, we have the hydrant and all that, I believe, is my understanding, we should have everything there.
So you know what you're tying on to, how far you're going?
Yes, you know, yeah, yep.
So we can basically have that put together, ready to drop.
Yeah, when, um, uh, Kobe's brother that does the boring comes in, which is still gonna be, he thought, a couple of weeks out, yeah, we should have everything when they're ready to come here, and they're ready to come back and do the tie-ins, we should.
I was gonna say, it shouldn't be a.
No, it shouldn't be that big a deal, because we should, we all will be able to put everything together and just pretty much have it ready for them.
Good. Um, yeah, South Market Progress meeting, uh, looking at the notes here, uh, from a week or so ago, yeah, AT&amp;T poll, they commented on that, NDOT suggested stay on top of AT&amp;T, because they, uh, have issues with getting stuff done timely. I don't know when the drop dead date last day is that we possibly have that out, I mean, uh, they're gonna start putting curbs in soon, as soon as.
Soon as they get done right up here, they're gonna start going back and making taps, and then, once they get so far, then their curb crews coming in behind.
But I'd say that's put the point where it has to come out, it's curbed.
Yeah, last time we met, uh, AT&amp;T said they'd have it out in a month, so they should have it out in the next couple of weeks.
Okay, that's good to hear.
There's wires and stuff on it.
Yeah, it was noted that the thirty-six, thirty percent complete, um, a week or so ago.
They're still saying, what, June one?
Well, no, i- i- it's June one for the square work, is what I, I wanted to point out, that's when, apparently there's gonna be some meeting of, or, they're going to contact the people on the square here soon about, uh, once they get closer to, uh, let them know what's, what's gonna be going on, when. Originally, I had written down six one twenty-four is when they thought they'd be on the square, but completion is like six, or nine twenty-seven.
Yeah.
Substantial completion, nine twenty-seven. So anyway, that, that, uh, uh, Gary talked about the water meter stuff, uh, so, I seen y'all looked at this email, or got it when we did the walkthrough, about stuff down RMC building that we, we, you know, make, need to make some decisions on. I guess a lot of this is board decisions, about keeping the internet, keeping, a lot of this is, yeah, we already use it. Um, so I don't know, we probably oughta be making decisions, I guess on the LP tank thing, we need to make a decision about that down at the pole, their pole yard, um, office security system, you know, we.
I think we should keep the.
Yeah.
I think we should keep the propane tank.
Uh, yeah, most of this, I don't think there's really, just, there's no question.
Just transferring names and that.
Uh, so, uh, I, I would say probably keep all the stuff we have, what about the off-road diesel, we, 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 we have a tank now.
Yeah, we have off-road diesel tank down there.
Um, is it from the same co, they use Cirrus, which has changed now?
That's, uh, that's who we used to.
Okay, so we, we don't want two tanks though, do we?
I don't think we need two.
Oh, you'll figure it out.
Yeah.
Uh, okay.
They, I thought that they're not taking those tanks.
Oh, they got all new tanks out there.
So, I, after we, we walked through last time down there, uh, before the last meeting, and looking at their IT, and they, they actually have a server room, and, and they have a, uh, actually an IT room, uh, for someone. But their printers, what really impressed me, their, their document, their, their, uh, project, or what do you call this darn thing, blueprint, printer, scanner, you know, it's something I think we really need to look at. Having, and that kinda got to me thinking further, and, uh, and talked to Doug about it some, but we, I'm not suggesting a full-time person, but a, uh, someone that does a little more work in IT, not the kinda stuff our outside IT guy gets as far as hardware, but, you know, someone that works on the computers, accumulating, tabulating, keep track of, uh, utility data. Uh, and it's, what's his, Tim?
Tim Honaker.
Tim.
Who's helping me out.
Doug has, uh, referenced him several times, his work he's doing for Doug, and I thought I might get with Tim and talk to him about some of the stuff I think we as a board need to be, you know, interested in as far as collecting data and storing data. So that's okay, the rest of it, yeah, I'll get with Tim and Doug, and we'll, we'll talk about it more, kinda come up with some plans, we're gonna have the facilities to certainly have the room to do it. Um, so, yeah, and that G I, the, you know, we talked too about, we have a GIS.
Yes, we do, and Luke, when we get a couple of minutes free, he's gonna help us look at ours. We struggled with it, keeping all in line, and, and being able to be consistent, going from meter to, uh, water valve, water valve, it might work for three or four, then it's way off, and. We've had to get hotspots, remember, Brandon, we had to do that, it did seem to help, so as soon as we get a few minutes with Luke, he's gonna look at our system and see.
Yeah, as far as hotspots, that's an issue, I mean, you're using probably the, the, just the, the wireless connection, uh, I don't know, it helped any, a lot of these new GMC trucks have the Cirrus, I mean, they, they can be a hotspot, or, uh, if that's something would help, you know, one of the trucks was signed up for us to trick them to that. Um, I don't, uh, okay, yeah, still, Doug and I've been talking more about this meter hours on these pits and, and rainfall, we're still working on that.
Yeah.
To get, get something going there, and, uh, uh, da, 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 da. One last thing, Beetle Street, uh, uh, we have that project starting here soon, and the storm drain that runs across Beetle between, will be Stan Ball and the house to the east of, and west of him, you know, west, Crunk. Goes in behind that property, Stan Ball's, and comes over there to that valley, and he was wondering if it's possible that could be jetted out some during this project, and I, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, depending on what size it is.
It's pretty big.
I mean, if it gets too big, ours can't, ours, ours won't pull itself through or do any good, so we'd have to get.
Yeah, it's a pretty big line, uh, it, uh, well, he's noticing Sargent Avenue, there's some issues with water, uh, on his property, and he was just asking, but you might talk to Tom.
I, I talked to Dr. Walz today, he called me about it.
Oh, he did?
So Tom contacted him. I talked to Tom a few months ago about him wanting to put tie-in to that sewer drain or running perimeter drains.
Mm-hmm.
According to Dr. Walz, he said something about his water in his basement, but he never mentioned that, or slow drain.
So you're aware of it?
Yeah, so I'm gonna make contact with Tom, hopefully tomorrow.
Okay, okay, well, one last thing. Um, you know, we're cutting a lot of holes to roads all over town, and, and as part of the project, and I pulled out the, uh, the bid for that project and trying to find, okay, what do we have in here, I don't have any specs for the repair on those cuts. I was just curious as to what our, our specs are as to replace, you know, fix our roads, um, I, I, I don't, I don't know, but, yeah, they, this, and then I got to thinking.
Well, my assumption would be that they're, I don't know if they're flow filling them, or what they're doing as far as fill, but, I mean, once it's in there, I mean, I'm sure they're gonna concrete them and.
Well, that'd be my hope, they come back and concrete and clean up the edge, some of them are jagged edges.
Well, they generally do.
Well, okay, I mean, I'm not in construction business, but I just wondered in my mind today, thought, well, how much is in the, the, the bid specs for that, and, uh, I know we, we've got a lot of them all over town, but, um, and then that brought up the idea that, you know, we, we, we probably should. Okay, we got them.
I actually just looked at it the other day, 'cause I was thinking the same thing, you know, some of these are a little rough, um, it says on there that it'd be fully repaired, back to original state.
Yeah.
Once the asphalt plants get going again, I'll say, you know, guys, it's time to really repair them, but until then, I don't know, but there's a whole lot they can do.
Yeah, 'cause it's like with the ones that I got approved, the three that I got approved, case set, soon as the blocktop plants, they can start getting on regular basis.
You know, we should probably have specs for the town of Rockville, anybody comes in and cuts our roads, I don't think we have any specs.
Yeah, we can put that together.
I, I think it's a good idea, just, anybody comes in, this is what's expected of you to, to repair your cuts.
I think we should do that, and we should talk about the storm permits and like we were discussing, and.
So, we got it in the minutes, right? Okay, we, uh, we'll follow up with that down the road, but, uh, yeah, I'm, I'm done.
Okay. We have any public comments? Luke, Kevin?
Just briefly, uh, basically just to kind of, uh, re-address, uh, just basically the town that board, if the council's on board, um, that, uh, Doug is gonna facilitate taking down the stars and get it rewired on the treaty. Um, I, I met with Main Street, I think, a week ago, let them know that we're gonna be taking down the colored lights from the square, um, which we talked about at our last meeting with Randy and, and the others. Um, no plan of replacing them with any white lights, but hopefully we get the courthouse to allow, allow them to bring white lights off courthouse in about six or eight places. Uh, we have talked to the police about that. Um, add snowflakes to wherever you see light, uh, streetlights, inside, outside the square, uh, we'll have a cost by this meeting, I'll, I'll hopefully have the inventory and then, and the estimate cost. Uh, also, uh, that y'all were, had no problem with storing that snowman someplace down out of the way, I'm sure. Uh, the, the lights, uh, we're suggesting that maybe if the park board wants to consider it, is maybe taking the colored lights that were taken down off the square, have to rehab some of them, is maybe doing the Chitaco building with those colored lights, be a nice application for them, or not, not, not a big deal. Um, the, uh, Main Street did commit to their, their half the budget that y'all had done last year, uh, I think, depending what that, what that number becomes, uh, to say if it's, if it's less than, then we'll just split the less than between the two of us, I mean, we won't hold you guys to your whole thing. Um, we're talking about snowflakes on all the, on the, on the light poles, that way they don't have to come right down, you know, January first or something. Uh, perhaps in the future, maybe start addressing US forty-one as we go, maybe every other light pole, or every fourth light pole with some sort of decoration, and also, uh, uh, getting banners for the new parking lot, um, that we can, uh, change out some of them for like holidays, or Cover Bridge Fest, or whatever, to dress that up a little bit. We'll get, we'll get costs, uh, all that through, uh, with Randy.
The banner issue is actually part of that grant, so we probably, if we need any additional funding, it should be very minimal, because we will use those grant funds to do banners.
Unanticipated expense that I, that I don't know what the cost would be, I'll work with Doug on it, is that once we get the snowflakes, um, the brackets that actually will hold them, uh, whether we can do them like these out here, uh, what do you call those things, uh, hose?
Hose plant?
Hose clamps and all that stuff, have somebody make them, you know, keep getting on Andy about doing stuff like that, but we don't know what that cost would be, and we'll get that to you as soon as we can. But, uh, again, I know you guys got a meeting for your park board, um, I think what, 'cause it's been kinda kicked around, is maybe making the park a little more of a focal thing, the parade starts down there, is, is maybe getting some sponsorships, maybe getting business to do those Christmas cards, you know, like, somewhat like what Turkey Run State Park did for a couple of years out there, and then I think the campers just lost interest in it. Something that brings some, uh, interest to the park down there during the holidays, so, other than that, that's all I got. Oh, one more thing, um, the Beetle Street project, a concerned citizen who's been taking care of that area for about the last twenty-five years, um, is, wants to really, that, when, when we get down with that project, it's graded and seeded and mobile after the fact. You wanna talk about?
Yeah, should make you a comment, yeah.
Okay, so, I said, I'll bring it up, that's all I got, kids.
All right, thank you. Anybody else?
Thank you.
Somebody wanna make a motion to it here?
Make a motion.
Second?
All favor?
Oh, sorry, I rescind my second.
Second? All favor?